We call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
It's always interesting when you look down and find your name is the one.[15.37][15.37][laughter] Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over us as we come together to do the business of the city of Lima. We ask you to guide our minds and our hearts and to make sound decisions on behalf of the taxpayers and residents of Lima. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Before we do the amendments to the agenda, I want to welcome, I believe we have a couple of students from Bath High School's government class here tonight observing our meeting. So, welcome to you. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to amend, I move to amend tonight's agenda by adding Sergeant Garrett Hammond to the privilege of the floor, adding the HR Committee due to the tardiness of the chairman, and Communication Number 14.
The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding one speaker under privilege of the floor, Communication Number 14, and the Human Resources Committee report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, Sergeant Jared Hammonds from the Ohio National Guard. State your name and address for the record, sir, and we have three minutes for privilege of the floor.
Okay. I'm Sergeant Jared Hammonds, 855 South Collette Street, Ohio Army National Guard. What I have for you tonight, real quick, is a survey that Mr. Gary Glenn and I have been working on. This survey basically is an outline of some questions that we're going to be proposing to the Lima City youth, basically ages six, excuse me, ages grade six through 12, because what we're looking for is to find out what the young youth of this area view as community service and leadership, okay? Because right now, what we're looking at is a lot of the young men and women, we clearly don't understand community service and what it means to be a part of a community or a role model. So, in partnership with Mr. Glenn in my office down there on Collette Street, is we're going to develop a program to bring these young men and women in with guest speakers and talk about what it means to be a member of your community, how you can be a role model in your community, make the right choices at the right times. We're looking at, basically doing this once a month with guest speakers at the Armory down on Collette Street. So, do you have any questions about that right now? Okay. Because some of the speakers that we're looking at bringing in are Stanley Jackson from Ohio State, we're also looking at Big Daddy Wilkins from OSU, the CFO for McDonald's region, and there's a young nurse down in Kettering that's from Lima who's now the nursing director for the Kettering Hospital to talk to these young men and women about this stuff. So, there'll be more to follow. Like I said, Mr. Glenn and I are working side by side on this, and we hope this takes off really large. So, if you don't have any questions for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
First of all, I want to thank Sergeant Hammond in the Ohio National Guards for putting the time and effort into this to our community. It was so important, and I'm hoping that we get to see more people get involved in this because we had an opportunity to go through these surveys and spend Thursday night, a lot of Thursday nights, and try to look into what we need for our youth. And one thing I want to look at, I want to see our youth be successful. We've got a lot of work to do, but we're going to make, we're going to do it as an opportunity and work with all kids, and this is for the whole Allen County, not just set for one area. With all the kids, it's important. This is our future, and we all should take hand on this. And I want to thank Sergeant, thank you so much for putting all your time into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. The consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that items B, C, and D of the consent calendar be received and filed, and item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file items B, C, and D, and to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number One.
From Chief Martin, requesting dispersment of funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund account.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number One receive and file.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number One.
We.
Uh, Communication does request legislation. Would you like to amend your motion, please?
I amend my motion. Mr. President, I move that Communication Number One receive and file and have the law director prepare necessary legislation.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Adams. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number One and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to amend Ohio Moving Forward Grant.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to note in the second paragraph, there was kind of an update on this program of the Moving Ohio Forward Grant, that the city of Lima has completed 13 residential demos, with 33 currently underway. This legis, this communication and future legislation will, of additional funds, will allow up to 40 more residential demolitions within the city. So, it's good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to amend the contract with Perryon.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with Neptune Equipment.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I made that Communication Number Five be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Six.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to advertise manner of the contract for landscape repairs for utilities.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Six and to authorize the Law Department to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From the Auditor regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Perry Protec.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract to purchase a new loader.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. I believe it needs the legislation as requested. Could you amend your motion, please?
Sure. Mr. President, I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second then is to receive and file Communication Number Eight and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation to pay job incentive payment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Ten.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eleven.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to approve tax incentive review council amendments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Eleven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Eleven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Twelve.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation District.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Twelve be received and filed and referred to the Public Works Committee.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Twelve and to refer it to Council's Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Thirteen.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation regarding easements for the all Lima bike path phase five.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Thirteen be received and filed and referred to the Public Works Committee.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Thirteen and to refer it to Council's Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Fourteen.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding stop-loss coverage.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Communication Number Fourteen be received and filed and the law director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Fourteen and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Reports of officials. Mr. Vince Oger.
Mr. President. I believe everybody should have a pack of the side deck that I'm going to try to run through fairly quickly. This is our annual report of the safety and health of the city relative to safety performance and performance of the health plan. The first slide is just workers' compensation claims by year, and you see that generally speaking for 2012, the trend continues to be down, which is a good thing, of course. The next slide is just, gives you injury rates by department. As is typically the case, the Fire Department, Police Department is where we have the most consistent injuries year to year, and that's just due to the nature of what they do, of course. The next slide is just a graph of the injury rates, and you can see again that the trend is down, which is a good thing. And then, as far as healthcare costs go, the first slide is really our net healthcare expenditures over the last several years. And again, you can tell or see there that generally speaking, the total aggregate spend at least is relatively flat, has been for several years now. The next slide shows employee contributions, and you can see that we were, had over $350,000 in employee contributions for 2012. I don't think we'll see the number, the number jump as much as it has the last couple of years. It still should trend up, but not at the rate it's been going up the last couple of years anyway as we go forward. The next slide is a bar graph, and that just shows the cost per employee, because some of the, when you, the two slides before when we talked about aggregate costs, some of that can be contributed or attributable, is attributed to the reduction in headcount that we've had. But this particular graph just shows what the cost has been per employee, so it kind of smoothes out for changes in headcount. And then you can see our healthcare cost growth trend as it compares to the national average, and again, generally speaking, we're performing better than the national average, which is a good thing. The next slide is just a review of the spousal car route program. We, in 2012, this is the largest year we've actually had for the spousal car route program. We paid out 130, just under $133,000. We confirmed cost savings, claims, costs avoided of a little over 101,000. We estimated savings of another 93,000, which gives us a net estimated savings for 2012 of about, just under $62,000. And then the last slide is just kind of where we're generally thinking in the next few years to, what we hope to accomplish, at least through the negotiating process. We want to continue to negotiate towards a 15% contribution level for employees for their health coverage. We want to continue to encourage participation in the revised Wellness Plan that hopefully will be on Council's agenda, I think, the next time. Of course, we're going to continue to explore the merits of the high deductible health plan structure. We want to negotiate for further restrictions on spousal coverage, and then we'll continue to look at retrospective rating, at least for workers' compensation as we go forward. That's all I have.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Page two.
Page two.
Injury rate trends by department.
Yes.
Those numbers are what?
That number represents, it's a, it's a formula that you plug in, you take the number of injuries, and you compare it to the total number of work hours. It's a, attempt, it's, I'm sorry.
Is it a dart number?
The dart number, I'm not sure I'm familiar.
Days with that way, days away.
This is, this is actually an injury rate. It's for 100 full-time employees, what that, is what that number tells you. So, for example, in engineering, actually, I use Fire Department, LFD, 15, based on the number, number of injuries that we had, if we had 100 full-time employees, we'd expect to have 15.7. The reason you use an injury rate is just because you have different departments with different manning levels and different hours worked, and so what the injury rate is, it tries to compare, make a comparison for each department, assuming they had 100 employees, and that way you get a apples-to-apples comparison.
Right.
That's why you do it, so.
Okay. I was, I was curious that engineering was zeros all the way across and then went up, and then parks, which had been, had numbers all the way across, went down to zero, and that's not a typo, though?
Not a typo. What will happen is, like in engineering, I think they had one injury, and because they've got relatively low manning level, anytime you have just one injury, it'll shoot the level up, the number up, is what it does.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sergeant Andy Green regarding Lima Police Department's use of Facebook and social media.
Mr. President, I was asked to come over and talk about the police department's use of social media. I started a Facebook page for the police department in November of 2012, and the hope was for us to be able to share positive information about the police department, as well as to be able to receive complaints from citizens. And the reason we did this is with the advent of social media, people have cell phones, they're able to get to the internet very quickly, information comes to them quickly, they're also able to send us information quickly. We started using it, and we've seen a large amount of success in using it. For example, in January, we had our first big success with Facebook, and that was at a local business, there was a theft that was caught on video. However, the subjects were not identified. We took clips from the video, placed them on the internet, and within an hour, we had it identified who they were and were able to go talk to them. So, without the internet, we may not have caught those people, or if we did, it might not have been as quickly. In March, there was a robbery, and it was down at Dollar General. We were able to place the photos on the internet. Very quickly, we were able to identify persons of interest in that case and able to speak with them. Again, without the internet, it may not have happened as quickly or at all. Currently, the Lima Police Department's Facebook page has almost 2,500 followers, and some of our posts have been viewed by thousands of people, where the actual followers of the page look at it and then share it with their friends, and their friends, and their friends, and on down the line. Between the, in the week of April the 6th, between April the 6th and April the 12th, I pulled the numbers up, and our page was viewed 86,000 times, which was pretty incredible. So, the message is getting out there, people were able to see the posts that we are putting out there. The Detective Bureau is using our page quite frequently to look for persons of interest of crimes. The street officers are going to start using it now to, to look for misdemeanor crimes also. In addition to Facebook, we're starting to use Twitter also. I don't know anything about Twitter. I'm brand new to this, so I've, I've had to enlist my teenage daughter to teach me how to use it, so there's not a whole lot.
Nobody around us Diaz would say that they learned it without talking to their kids. If they did, they're lying.
I don't know anything about it.
Except for those of us without kids who are in public relations for a living. You had a younger person tell you about it, Mr. Nie.
So, we hope for success with that, too, but also, people are able to send us complaints through Facebook. They can do it either publicly by posting it on our wall, or they can send a private message, and we, we've received several. Some of them have been neighbor complaints, like loud music, barking dogs. One was for somebody riding ATVs in the city, and some of these people may or may not have complained without social media, so they felt comfortable being able to communicate through social media with us. We answer those posts right away, and we're able to send officers to check on that. So, it's been really successful, and we hope to continue using it. Without further questions, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And next is Howard Elstro regarding demolition update.
Mr. President and Council, when I was last here, we reported that the Neighborhood Stabilization Funds were completely expended, which enabled us to demolish 220 residential structures, utilizing the grant of 1.4 million. Tonight, I wish to update you on the Attorney General Moving Ohio Forward Demolition Grant, which we began efforts on in October of 2012. This grant totaled $288,133 and is expected to be, enable us to demolish 42 residential structures. To date, we have 36 structures completed. We have eight additional structures that will be released to the contractor for asbestos removal and demolition on May 8th. The legal demolition process has commenced for an additional 17 structures, and pending your approval on matching funds, the city could have an additional 222,000 available for new demolitions. As you received a communication that Counselor Adams commented on previously, this would be a one-to-one match. For every dollar the city put up, the AG grant money would also put up another dollar, and we would be able to demolish another 35 properties. What you have attached in your packets, when you get back to what we call the white pages, those are 190 vacant structures, which we believe meet demolition criteria. Even though we don't have funds to demolish the, the complete list of 190, as we do get calls either from yourselves, or citizens, or property owners, we take a look at those, and if the condition of those properties meet demolition warrants by ordinance, they are added to this list. If you do approve the next phase of the grant program, then Bill Brown, our Building Commissioner, and his inspectors will continue to rank the properties to be demolished on the basis of severity of the structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Committee reports, the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met on April 15th at 5:30 in the Council Conference Room. The subject was junk abandoned autos and signage regulations. The meeting was open, and the first subject of junk autos had multiple discussions. I'll highlight some areas that were brought to the committee of possibly amending the definition of what constitutes a junk auto to better match the Ohio Revised Code, reinstate the warning tickets or stickers, explore the use of LPD road officers to assist preventing maintenance personnel with impounding, explore use of staff to investigate and enforce parking violations on private property, and finally, explore the use of designated tow day, designated tow days to be more efficient. Multiple discussions were carried out, and it, a motion was made to have the Law Department prepare legislation to update the current ordinance to match the Ohio Revised Code, and that was subsequently done last, at council meeting, and was approved by council. And then finally, we had just a few minutes to begin the discussion on signage in the city limits, and that will continue. It's still in committee, as well as the junk auto, and will be further spoke, spoken about. With that, Mr. President, I'd like to move that the committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report as submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Safety Services Committee.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a Safety Service meeting on the 15th, was about Harry Hotaway, and all our councils have his report. I want to move, I want to file, I want to approve and file and move this report right now. Excuse me.
Second.
Excuse me. Got it out now.
Say it again.
Say it again. I got something by throat there, truly. We see this, this report was done on February, I mean, not February, April the 15th, by Harry Hotaway, and all the people's involved in, and myself, Chairman, and Ms. Adams, and Ms. Townsend, Sam McLean, Jesse Lowe, Paige Townsend, our law director, and we talked about what some of the things we, what's going to change in there, and some of the things we learned, that the procedure that the new meeting calls, when the police calls with me. I want to make a motion that we approve these minutes. Safety Service Committee, minutes.
All right.
Receiving file.
Receiving file, I'm sorry. Receiving file and approve these Safety Service minutes.
Second. Motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the Safety Services Committee report as submitted by Counselor Glenn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next is the Human Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Human Resource Committee met on April 29th, and the purpose was to discuss revising the current wellness program as it exists, and basically that, there was a discussion, but that includes focusing on five risk factors and what they call the metabolic syndrome, where if you have three of those risk factor, if you test and three of those are positive, then you would be an at-risk person, where it's more likely that you would type 2 diabetes, get type 2 diabetes or cardiac disease. I think it's a, well, it's, to create, this is a quote, "Create less cost for the city's health plan compared to those individuals who do not take action by becoming a part of this, and individuals that make healthy lifestyle choices will reduce their long-term costs for healthcare, enhance their chances of enjoying a long, satisfying retirement, and improve their overall quality of life." So, that's the gist of the, of what the meeting was, and the committee unanimously supported the proposal to amend Ordinance 26006. I move that this committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the Human Resources Committee report as submitted by Counselor Townsend. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 8713.
Amending the 2013 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 8713 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass 87, Ordinance 8713 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 8713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8813.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 88-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 8813 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 8813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8913.
Authorizing the auditor to make a payment to American Bottling Company, DVA 7-Up of Lima, under the new jobs incentive program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 89-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 8913 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 8913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9013.
Authorizing the continuation of and amendments to the following enterprise zone and community reinvestment area agreements based on the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 90-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9013 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 9013 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9113.
Amending Ordinance 12712.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 91-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9113 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 9113 has been passed on its first reading by six to two vote. Ordinance 9213.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Neptune Equipment.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 9213 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9213 on its first reading, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
This is a project, we're doing the water project up in Caro, so that we will not need meter readers. This should be a system that we hope to test and find out how we can implement citywide, maybe say, our utilities department, so it's a big project, and I'm looking forward to see how this works for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I understand it's really good, but I think we're going to lose jobs behind it too. So, it's a great system, but I hope we don't lose, a lot of people lose their jobs, I miss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 9213 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Ordinance 9313.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Harry Protec.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 9313 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9313 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 9313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 9413.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation District.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neifer.
I move that Ordinance number 9413 be placed on second reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to place Ordinance 9413 on second reading. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. And Ordinance 9513.
Authorizing the mayor to accept donations and purchase certain real property for the All Lima Back Path Phase 5 project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neifer.
I move that Ordinance number 9513 be placed on second reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to place Ordinance 9513 on second reading, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Communication, I'm sorry, Ordinance 9613.
Amending the city's employee wellness incentive programs established by Ordinance 26006.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Ordinance 9613 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9613 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 9613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. miscellaneous business. Mr. Neifer.
Just when I am this evening, a while ago, it was the council referred the civil service rules for review to the Human Resources Committee. There's one rule in particular that I have been watching and waiting for, as I feel strongly about it, and that is the hiring and promotional exams for the police and fire departments, and I have not seen that come across yet. And I understand that it's a process, I just want to bring it back to attention, I, the process has gotten kind of long, and my time on council is growing shorter by the day, so it's something I'd certainly like to see prior to my leaving council, so just wanted to call attention to that and hope that we can get on that, that portion of the rules review here before too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neifer. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple items. First off, the citywide cleanup is in full force for this month, so I think the only one that's available this next Saturday is the Northside Neighborhood Association, and that's going to be at the St. Gerard's parking lot, so if you've got your truckload of stuff to come out, bring it on out and dump it for us, and keep our cities clean, and tomorrow's a very important day. A lot of people don't think there's a lot of things on our ballot, but it is voting day tomorrow, and there are some very important issues, especially with education. There are some schools, especially our own Lima City Schools, that we ought to renew this levy, it's important to have educated people in our society, and the more education that we can provide for them and a better education, I think it all helps society as a whole, so keep them in your mind and Elida in your mind. Apollo, very important part of our community, so there's some very important things, very important issues to get out and vote, so get out and vote tomorrow, the polls will be open from 6:30 until 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Low.
Just three things. Eastside Neighborhood Association meeting will be held at Lincoln Park Shelter House. It's a meet and greet with your neighbors that will take place May the 14th at 7:00 PM. Come out, get you some food and eat and fellowship and get to know your neighbors a little better. June 1st, Eastside Neighborhood Association will sponsor the dumpster for the citywide cleanup. That dumpster will be located in the north parking lot of Forest Park Church at 315 Collins Avenue, and sort of to echo what Sam just said, please go out and support these schools. I'm a Spartan to the core in my heart, but I know Apollo needs a lot of help right now, and they have accepted Spartans out there, and I ask that you, those that do have the privilege to vote, to support their levy, please, please support their levy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Mr. Tevin.
I would like to call a meeting of the Finance Committee for 5:30 PM on Monday, May the 20th, and the items to be covered will be a review of the budget actuals through April, and the issue that Ms. Adams referred on contracted services and the purchasing policy relative to those services. The next citywide focus meeting will be Tuesday, May 14th at 7:00 PM at 1440 West Spring, the old fire station number four, the Lacknep Center. It is being hosted by Lakewood West and the Boulevard Neighborhood Associations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope Neighborhood will be having their meeting tomorrow night at Unity School at 6:30. The first round of mowing, having spoke to Ms. Odom earlier, will be starting the week of the 13th of May. This was decided to try and do it as close to Memorial Day weekend, so that adjoining property owners, possibly if they're doing a cookout, having family over, this property adjacent to them will have been freshly mowed and have a better appearance. I was a little concerned with the date, because as much as the grass is growing now, so I will personally be out checking during this activity, you know, for the contractors, just to make sure they're getting things off the sidewalk and not left in the street to wash down the storm sewer and those type of things, so be patient, it's going to start the week of the 13th. May 16th will be Midway East meeting at their center at 7:00 PM on East Kibbe Street, and then, May 18th, both Hope and Midway East will be participating in the citywide pride and have dumpsters, one for Hope will be located at Unity Elementary School on East Third Street, and Midway East will be located at 214 South Pine Street. It's the lot at the corner of Elm and Pine, and then, I too would like to call a meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee for May 13th at 5:30, or, yeah, 5:30, and the subject will be junk autos, the continuation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
Yeah, I got a couple things here. First of all, like, I think all the folks that participated in the King Neighbor Association, we did a little bit different this year, we went around door to door and let folks know that we will have the dumpsters out there, and they increased to three dumpsters, and we still had more, but we did, we had to tell folks to go somewhere else, because he didn't want to drop off the three dumpsters at the time, but we filled them up, and that shows that we are taking pride in our property, and they clean alleys out, and I thank you guys so much, what you guys have done, because a lot of things that need it, and I thought that'd be a great idea, we're going to do that again, and, I mean, Southside had, when Martin DeKeen had theirs, and we're going to send letters around again, let folks know it, and they was kind of happy about it, because everyone got the letter, like, oh, we got work done, so I'm happy about that. Also, we will be having our Mother's Day in March, which is great, and first time ever doing this, though, we want to celebrate with the mothers, and there can be any mother come out, and we want to, and we're going to sit down, eat pizza, and talk about motherhood, and I've seen that article in newspaper about our young folks having kids, and we're going to work on that, you know, just continue working with our young youth, letting them know about pregnancy. Also, I want to thank, we have two of our, we have a wall that we put, people that help us out so much, and the pictures on our wall at Squirrel Allen Center is Councilman Neifer and Councilman Adams, they have done so much work in there, it looked really nice, so I called the wall of city council, and I went in there and seen it, I didn't have my picture on it yet, though, but Neifer is on there, but we appreciate it. Ms. Adams and Mr. Neifer, thank you guys so much, what you guys do for that center, and without you guys' help, it will never happen, thank you guys so much. I want to just bring it out to all the city council, that you guys know what you guys doing, and I know I've been dealing with a lot of calls, and I know I'm going to try to hold up to them, I mean, Memorial Day for the grass, I'm trying very hard, but we got some grass that I growed up pretty high, getting the calls on it, I know I did a lot of calls for drug houses, and you guys know who we are, and I'm not going to call you out at city council, so you think I'm going to call you guys out, but you got to stop, and we'll continue calling you guys in, you've been keeping me moving around, you know, keeping me busy, though, but we will continue letting you know that we're not going to allow that in the sixth war, okay? It's the same way we've been doing it, we're going to continue doing it, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President, just note that the, on June 1st, Westgate Neighborhood Association will have its citywide pride dumpster at Superior Credit Union on Allentown Road, it's many years that we've been there, and encourage everybody to bring their stuff. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. I don't have anything this evening.
Mr. President. I move the Lima City Council adjourn into executive session for purposes of real estate.
Second. The motion in the second is for Lima City Council to adjourn into executive session for purposes of real estate. Is there any discussion? Yes, there's discussion, I'll inform you all, I was accosted by Mr. Elstro, after we, shortly before we came out here, and wanted to bring a matter of real estate to us in executive session, so, okay? It's kind of like a box of chocolates, we'll go in there and find out what's inside, okay? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neifer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Lima City Council has voted by a vote of seven to...
One.
One. To go into executive session, we will adjourn into executive session in six or seven minutes. Thanks.